Alright, here we are. It's time for tunnel meeting number 145. It's May 6th, 2025. And well, today we are being joined by Guillermo, Slate, AJ, Amayo, Ashley, Vani and Alfred's note taker. I think Alfred was here shortly, but he might rejoin. And Konichi is joining as well, right as we speak. Thanks for being here. And as you can see on screen, a little outline of the agenda, starting off with a couple of mentions. And then we get an update from the R&amp;D Guild on the community proposal vote, the update being the results of that vote. And after that, I'd like to take some time to discuss a new community website. You'll see what that's about in a bit. Then, well, before we kick off, actually, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people all quite in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and its ecosystem. And it's efficient towards decentralized beneficial AGI. We have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups. So if you want to help out and spread the word on our mission, then you're more than welcome to join our Discord server. It has a how to join section and that section will tell you how to join. Then, yeah, a couple of mentions. The first one being the workgroup sync and call for this month will be coming Monday, the 12th, on 15 UTC. It's added to the calendar, so yeah, you shouldn't be able to, you should be able to find it. Quickly double checking. Yeah, it's there. So I hope to see, well, pretty much all workgroups represented there. Speaking of representing, also I'd like to give a quick shout out to Malik and Slate. There was a meetup where they represented us. And yeah, Slate, perhaps if you can, could you share a little about it?
Yeah, sure. Thanks a lot, Peter. So we got funded for hosting an Accuris meetup. Basically, we are also ambassadors and working in Accuris community as well. They are mainly working upon the decentralized computing and how to utilize different devices or our handphones or even our mobile devices for these decentralized computing power. Also, like it's an alternative to AWS and other hosting services. But yeah, they are working towards it. So in that, we created a presentation presenting Singularity Net and also its ecosystem inside of it. There were, there were basically developers there and also some people from universities that we invited, who took part in it. And I basically tried to present an ambassador program there and the processes that we follow and how we tend to support the decentralized ecosystem and the way we work, basically. And also mentioning the funding, the grant program, because you know, that's, I think, the main area of interest for many developers and also the experts which in the technical fields. So yeah, Malik and I presented Singularity Net and it was a fun event and we really had a great time. I'll share some links. Maybe you guys can go and interact with them. Also, I'll share the link to Accuris community as well. You guys can check them out as well. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you. And Malik. Cool. Yeah, then, well, kind of sticking to you, Slate, on Education Guild side of things. There's a little update?
Oh yeah. So Education Guild is currently working on the second round of certification program. We made quite some significant changes from the last round. That was completely on forums and other stuff, but now we are changing a lot of things in it. Mainly shifting it to a more presentable platform. And yeah, I'm sure we are going to progress as we move forward with new rounds. And yeah, currently we are taking in submissions for portfolios for interested participants in all the fields. So whether you are a creator, content creator, or you're good at assessing stuff, or even if you're good at dashboards or development, you can apply with your portfolio. We'll try to adjust you up in different positions with the working of the certification program. And yeah, it's open right now. We have a two weeks submission window. I'll share the form link. It's also in the Education Guild channel, so you guys can check it out as well. And yeah, looking forward to it.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. And then, not quite sure how I do the screen sharing here, but I feel it should be doable. Almost there? Bear with me. Ah, the links are showing up in chat now. Awesome. I figured I would just share this nice little picture. It's a video, actually. No, this sound is probably not working, but it's, you hear a car here with a big container. I don't know, it's just a little piece on the supercomputer side of things. I'm not sure exactly how much is public, but it's basically a bunch of H200s and L40S, I believe is the term. A whole bunch of CPUs and servers and 10-storant racks, all that jazz. There were some comments by Janet Adams in the Telegram channel, the expected, what's the word? When it all comes online, basically. It's supposed to be June, July, which is one, two months from now. And yeah, I don't know, it's finally getting there. So I wanted to share that little teaser video. Alright, just a little mention there. Cool. Then I think we can move to the R&amp;D Guild with, well, basically with the results of the vote on the community proposals. Guillermo, the floor is yours. If you you appear a little bit muted still, but that'll get sorted.
I do, I do. Thank you, Pete. First, a big shout out to Slate and Malik. That's great stuff. I just saved the whole link. And yeah, with this new iteration of the certification, I don't know if it's a good time now or after this iteration to translate into Spanish and push it out to another town. I don't know, we should discuss that, Slate. But the experience you guys are doing is pretty good. And I'm gonna share my screen, Pete, to wait a minute. Okay, okay, okay. Sorry for that. Kids, screens, computers, damn it. Get this going, okay. Guys, I'm sure you guys can see my screen. So second time we've done this, I'm lost already. How many voting? I think it's the second time. We did have to, so I'm gonna give a little bit of context and then we'll go to the results. Previous iteration, first time we put the system into work, five or four proposals, nine, no, 29 votes, 29 core contributors participate. It was a two-week timeline we left open. This time, we postponed the deadline. Well, initially we gave a month to present proposals. There was lack of new proposals in this iteration. Different circumstances. Still, we pushed the community members. We gave one more week and we finally have three proposals with the market price and all that and the developments we still have on the pipeline with a budget already allocated. The beginning, we thought, okay, it's better if we don't have too many proposals, then it's better if we always have new ideas and then we figure out how to build them. That's probably, that's the best approach and it's more fun to work that way. We kept the window open for one or two weeks. I don't remember. Two more new ideas came in, as I mentioned. Two weeks ago, deadline for voting, by then only nine community core contributors engaged in voting. We advertised and we almost doubled the number of participants, even though the voting is just gonna put an order on the proposals because we are lucky enough, we have budget for developing all of them. But still, we thought it was a good survey, a good temperature check on what community members are looking forward, what is a good idea, what is useful, what, what not. And again, yeah, keep developing the decision-making process within the community. We pushed the deadline one more week and again, we doubled 15 votes. So three proposals went through. I'm gonna go the results now, but first a little bit, a short description of the proposals. So TiVo and Markal proposed an event scheduling system. This to help us to schedule and to find the right time slot for our meetings, automation system. The goal is to simplify event creation, integrate authentication mechanisms beyond Google that we all lock in, yeah, and make all the notifications automatize and help player engagement, better production and workflow. Second, enhancing an SEO for the ambassador program. And again, we see how the R&amp;D is complementary with other guilds. First with TiVo and the whole workgroups and guilds that he leads, and he's in a different timeframe. So he's working towards the whole community and more than nothing to help TiVo organize all his stuff. Secondly, we are complementary to the marketing guild, even though each guild has their own budget allocation. This could be a simple proposal from the marketing guild in the marketing guild. So, but what if we turn the R&amp;D into a place for, well, to have an excellent budget allocation in this kind of circumstances? And what if we have this proposal for marketing within the R&amp;D? At the beginning, when we put this to discussion, we have an internal discussion. We didn't vote. We just mentioned which will be our position. We critique ourselves. We put ourselves in the line. My personality that this wasn't an R&amp;D proposal. But still, the whole concept of being a funnel for ideas and development, it is a research. So at the end, it was, okay, let's make the community decide if it's, if it's an R&amp;D thing or not. And you will see, the votes will show what the community thinks. But again, optimize content, let's say, search results, not only for the ambassador, but also we can repeat this in the different aspects of the ecosystem. And then final, an AI agent for the core contributors, an AI to start interacting with us in governance and in different meetings. Still challenging, but we are promoting this. So what if we start using it? That was the whole idea. And more now that we have that container beautiful, shining, who knows where. But still, we have a lot of blocks in, so we will definitely use all the powerful tools from the ASI Alliance, the Fage Agent Verse. There's a lot of great stuff out there for us to use. And what if we invite an AI to participate with us and have this core contributor kind of label into it? What she or it or he or they could do with us? And here are the response, okay? Sorry I'm going too long, but really, the better description is the context, the context of the ideas, not only the results. We have a simple, again, this is an opportunity to show the system, a simple email validation of a core contributor through Discord name, then the 15 participants and their results. All the analytics that Google present to us, graphs and everything. So we have the first proposal with six votes of 15, so that's almost 50% of the members understand that this is a useful proposal. 10 of 15, so that's more than, almost 75% of the community members that participate understand the opposite of my rationale, that this is a good place for developing this. And we are, R&amp;D can become a funnel for ideas from all guilds and workgroups, as was the intention. And you can see 10 of 15 vote to have the SEO. And with the AI agent, you have seven of 15, so that's 52.5%. So pre-labeled, yeah, we'll help marketing and the SEO, we allocate this. Again, all the details of the information, it is on the form. I'm gonna share with you guys all the analytics and then probably let you share up. Link also in our channels, Pete, but that will, that will be all for all.
Yeah, for me, just for my understanding, so this means all three gets funded?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I have to check. We have to double check, but it gives an order, okay? So when we have a space and budget allocation, it was a way to still keep priority to the, to the ideas. I'm sorry for the background noise. But yeah, three of them go through.
Awesome. And yeah, an important detail to add there. So yeah, cool. Alright, any questions in the room or comments?
Just wondering what the timeline is for them or Guillermo, they ought to be done by the end of this quarter or are some of them longer?
No, no, they are one quarter developments, SEO and yeah, three of them. So just one quarter proposal. Yep.
Alright, good stuff. And keeping this one, the current one on screen, the SEO one in mind for the agenda item a little bit later, ties in nicely there.
Indeed, indeed.
Alright, yeah, if there's no further questions, then I think we can move on. I did get a request from Slate to present shortly about the budget planner integration inside of Roblox from Gamers Guild side of things. So yeah, Slate, if you want, the floor is yours.
Alright, thanks a lot. I totally forgot to share this before, so it just got in my mind, so I'll try to keep it quick. Let me share screen. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yep, all good.
Okay. So Gamers Guild have basically shifted its focus from designing and modeling towards functional integrations of the working models that are being implemented inside of Ambassador Program into the Roblox we are getting, that we are working upon, which includes multiple different stuff. But we started with the Ambassador Program Budget Planner. Then we also have this archive tool, which we plan to integrate as well. And also all the functional things like the skill database and others into the Roblox platform. So I'll just give an overview of the trayry dashboard. We have this dashboard right here, which have these different datas from different quarters of the Ambassador Program. What we tend to do is we tend to generate an API key or a URL from the app scripts of Google Sheets. Then we tend to get the data in the JSON format and we integrate it inside of a Roblox platform. So this is a little brief of how it works. I'll just run it and show you the results. This is in a different environment, but it's going to get shifted into the actual game. So as we enter the game, the budget gets fetched, as you can see in the log. And when you click on the dashboard, you will be able to see the different data from the different quarters of the Ambassador Program. Now you can shift between different quarters and you'll see in the log that the different data gets fetched. And for some quarters, we don't have the monthly AGIX calculation, but for those that we have, it's going to show up right here. We tend to add other details as well, like the AGIX exchange rate and the calculations that gets done for each quarter into this platform. And as you can see, for quarter number four, 2024, we have the monthly AGIX data. And we have the complete functioning of this Ambassador Program Budget Planner inside of Roblox. And it's completely being done live. And even if I change any value inside of the sheets, it gets showcased over here. So it's a live integration and now it's working and we are going to shift it to the actual game. And just as we are over here, let me also show you the progress on the map, which also got delayed a bit, but we are working towards it. So we have the complete game. We divided it into three different sections. We have the city map where people will spawn in. So it's basically kind of a Singularity Net area that people get spawned in. And they'll have different ways to interact or to interact with the different things that occur inside of Singularity Net, which could be its ecosystem and also its services that it offers. They'll spawn in over here. They'll have to collect some cash or some stuff or let's say AGIX tokens. But of course, that got changed to ASI, so we'll change it to ASI. And then when they collect it, there's going to be a bridge system over here. They can travel to the other side of the map where there is going to be the Ambassador Program and they can take admission over there as in, as a university. So they'll take admission over there and they'll get to interact with all the guilds and workgroups, which would be inside of Ambassador Program. And it would be a completely live thing and it will have all the details that we have inside of Ambassador Program right now and also the services that we offer. So it would be a live model and everybody who is not even in part of Singularity Net gets to play with this. And of course, with the gaming functionality, we don't have to do much marketing in this and because it's going to be a live game. And of course, it's a big game, so it gets attraction automatically. And yeah, that's, that's a bit I wanted to share on this as well. So yeah, that's about it. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you. Looking cool. I have to admit, I've never played Roblox. I might be one of the few, but might be time to give it a go.
Yeah, sure.
Is it like, is it like live or is this like pre?
It's in beta phase, but we, of course, we give access to anybody who wants to, like, at least test things out. They can check it out privately.
Awesome. Any questions or comments in the room? Right, then let me pop back to screen sharing. Doesn't want me to. Alright, yeah, then the next topic on the agenda is a new community website. And this is something which is being worked on in the background since quite a while. And most of the developments have been on deep funding side of things. And the idea of this community website is to have like a central point of entrance, like any community member, whether you're a dev or very much into ethics, or you might want to become an ambassador. Yeah, this will be the point where it all funnels down to, let's say. And yeah, I figured I would share a little bit, but also ask for input. Let me share the fake map file. It's always smooth, this switching between stuff. So this is not live, this is, this is fake map. Basically, this outline, it's all up for changes still. If there's people really interested in being involved with developments, yeah, you can hop on a call. The first upcoming one would be tomorrow, actually. Let me quickly verify. That's at 12 UTC. But there will be multiple calls. Yeah, I figured this would be a good way of at least getting some input. So yeah, a couple of the main points would be this events button, because it will be shared, a shared calendar with deep funding and with BGI Nexus. And yeah, of course, like the rest of it kind of, in my mind at least, speaks about itself, how do you say this in proper English? Explains itself. The workgroup dropdown will have information on the workgroups. The resources will have more resources, FAQ will have, well, you can guess that. Yeah, so this would be an example of, of the calendar. And right now, it's still a little bit of a puzzle. Because basically, right now, we use Google Calendar as the main source of calendaring around. And as we just saw by Guillermo's update, there's also some tooling being made on making it easier and not depending on Google. So yeah, we'll have to puzzle a little bit to see how that can work out. It brings a sync to Google Calendar button. I'm not 100% sure, first of all, if we wanted to be getting input from Google Calendar. Yeah, so like whether we want it and if it's possible. But these are things that will get sorted over the coming weeks. And yeah, there's a section with a couple of steps, how to get started. I kind of suggested to them, like, just put a Discord how to join section there, because we funnel everybody to that section, I kind of feel. So yeah, this will be probably remade quite a bit. And yeah, we have a bunch of, I see Daniel being Jane Doe. He's someone made it to the stock pictures. That's cool. Um just uh, you know, th- this is a research page, so there's all kind of like uh explanations on the inner workings. And I imagine a lot of this uh will be sourced from um the archive. And it does come with a blog and here as well, it's a little bit of a puzzle still, um how this will relate to like the Substack. Will this feed from the Substack? Will we perhaps do a manual selection of articles? Um perhaps interject it with videos. Um you know, to like highlight the the core, most important blogs. Um that's that's still quite up for debate. Um it also comes with a contributing article um button, and this is in the same um vein as Deep Funding has it. Not sure if any of you saw that, but um I think Ubio over the weekend's um posted. He used the community website of Deep Funding to put a blog in there. And yeah, that's pretty much gonna be the same uh single sign-on functionality as Deep Funding has. And with some role uh role dedications. Oh Guillermo, I do want that T-shirt, man. I'm jealous. Sorry. Um.
Do get it.
I'll try and focus a little bit. Um so yeah, there there would be room for um article submissions as well. And yeah, the we right now, we don't have a dedicated newsletter, so this will very likely, as far as I'm concerned, at least, link to the Singularity Net one. And basically, all these useful links and and ways to connect, um we can, we can all define that ourselves. Um oh yeah, and some socials, but yeah, that speaks for itself. So yeah, that that gives a a little, little overview. Um right now, I don't have the full thing myself, like the the more detailed pages, but um yeah, there's a whole bunch of things that could potentially feed in here, like, for example, um well, this this uh page that will explain how to join. I imagine it will be quite like the how to join on on Discord, but that would be something for onboarding to jam in on and and optimize, I guess. Um kind of the same for the the blog uh space that will kind of in a way, it's, as I mentioned, a bit of a puzzle how it relates to Substack. Um but it would also mean that we can maybe get rid of the community forum uh translation posts. Because um back when we had a medium page for Singularity Net, um there was always this extra step because we didn't want to share medium, like main medium account um access to people outside of the foundation. But potentially, we could host the translations in the blog section here. And then, I don't know, just filter on like a language um tag, for example. So you would only get the Spanish or Chinese articles. Um I could see that working quite nicely, and then we would be in full control. So yeah, that's, I think, about it as far as introduction goes. Um a- any thoughts? Is this um is this something useful? Is this uh just more stuff to deal with or what's the what's the feeling in the room? Uh just reading chat, I see um what are Ambassador Community hubs? I I think this is um part of the translation of the deep funding content into um, you know, using that as a base um for the ambassador. Basically, it's a shared um chat visual. Um what's the word? Unity. Main thing really is how and where it'll be shared. Without that, there's not a lot of points. Uh very true. Um well, main um place of advertising, I imagine, uh would be just a link on the Singularity Net website, like anybody that does want to in the broader sense, like both Deep Funding and BGI Nexus and Ambassador, they would get funneled into this um community page and then click through to, well, to to figure out are you more into deep funding or would you be interested in becoming an ambassador? Or are you more into BGI? But also feel free uh to to just harsh criticism is welcome as well. I see a lot of um optimism in chat, uh which is also welcome, I guess, but uh no need to like, I didn't make it. So if you think it's utter shit, please be honest. I prefer that over um. Yeah, yeah, you catch my drift. Um yeah, and just to add some, um we would get um basically, we would get um uh as you could see with the single sign-on thingy, um where you can contribute. That can also work for um, let's say uh admin stuff, so we can give people the role like the Writers Guild, um we would give them a role, we would give onboarders who uh you know, just for for content uh management. Um at the same time, I can almost hear a couple of you people think like, oh, this will be a lot of maintenance. I think it shouldn't be too much, like um quite a lot of the information is uh relatively static. Um of course, the event and the blogs are um always changing. That will take effort. Um I personally be completely happy to uh to do that thinking part on the event side of things. Uh let's see, main image at top of page ideally shouldn't be a person, because whatever gender, NSD, age, etc., the person you choose is, people want much. Um that will feel like it's not for them. Yeah, fair. Um this is relatively arbitrary. Um I'm not sure if there's any reasoning behind this specific picture. Um oh, actually, I didn't. My participant list um of of Zoom is overlaying on the uh video part, so I didn't call that out. Um but yeah, it would also be nice. Um like, I I think we do have a decent uh welcome video. Uh at the same time, it might be good to have a check on it, see if it's still up to date, if it might need some optimizing here and there. And then, so yeah, in that sense, there there is a little bit of um extra work coming here and there, because what's an additional outlet or something? Kenichi, go for it.
Yeah, um hello everyone. This actually looks really, really good. I just have a quick question. Would R and D be having access to the backend uh tool that we can optimize, add a few features and also like um, you know, maybe there are improvements that we can make on our site, so we'll be having such answers.
Um yes, I think um that should be completely fine. At the same time, um well, one of the ideas is to keep this uniform um imagery across um deep funding, BGI and us. So like completely changing everything and making it look completely different, um that would kind of um yeah, go against that, I guess. Yeah, feel free to just unmute, Kenichi. Go for it.
Uh no, no, I of course, definitely. I consider it's a like a bit of like a template here that follows uh similar as uh the community, like deep funding website. No, I just mean like adding additional features, like in the R and D, we have like a few tools that we're working on, things that, you know, are unique to the ambassador program. So I would just think we wouldn't be able to add access to those other tools and other use cases that we have in the program.
Yeah, for sure. Um I think, you know, to me personally, the the about uh should be uh this, this, this we can can change as we wish, like um the resources has ton of um options, like we can just, I mean, it it needs to be user-friendly as well, so we shouldn't link like two hundred resources, but um yeah, definitely tooling like the skill database or um the treasury, um oh wait, that's not public. Resources can be, can fit anything. Uh yeah, Vanessa on proofreading the content, absolutely fully agree. Um yes, that will happen. Uh that's just not the current uh stage yet. Uh there's already a proper logo for the Ambassador Program rather than using the one I'm currently seeing. Yeah, very true as well. So basically, just just to give a bit of context, why there's these things and and why there's, for example, ambassador with an E um that clearly illustrates in itself that it's uh not done by something that's uh by someone that's involved with the Ambassador Program, right? Um this is simply the the web devs just pulling some stuff. Ah, you're right. Now I im- uh understand Guillermo, your message in chat on John. That's Ubio, right?
Yeah, that's uh John's mid. Listen, so yeah, um my take, this kind of thing, the efforts, uh what it makes it a uh uh functional artifact, it's uh we need to populate with information. And it really does help to whatever SEO or search on the ambassador to have an imagery in terms of marketing uh and branding is is really cool to have a unified kind of uh standard for good. Yeah, good branding. We we need that o- over the spectrum. Then the uh kind of answering, Kenichi, I did have a first impression uh as this is kind of something that we discussed with uh Jan a year ago, more than a year ago. Uh the community page and all that, it had went from A to C a couple of times and um yeah, to, you know, then to find traffic into this and to make them useful for real and not just another HTML. Because this is a template, you, this is a bootstrap. You, that's why you see the lower nostrum, the 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 text there is always the same. It's a, you buy a template for fifteen dollars. So uh the thing is, what we do this, uh so I I really like the branding idea. The unification and to have our kind of one criteria for the whole family. I think it's it's cool. And then we can use this place uh to push people, because there's no is it won't be a good idea to create a our own Discord or our own, because we have all those channels and each tool is important, you know, uh a teach language uh as a demo, whatever editing tools you use at the end is is the purpose of of what we are building. So here is there is a clear thing. I don't see how we will be able to integrate whatever blockchain thing, even though you can connect a wallet to this. And to have that kind of functionality with our program contribution as a law and how we can integrate those aspects following what Kenichi was saying, because you need to develop an architecture from scratch to have that. You can, you can then integrate a Discord login or whatever, but uh yeah, I don't know, if we inter- or we push people to a different for, as you were saying, uh Kisi, uh the database or whatever artifact we build on the R and D. Um yeah, but it's really cool. It's 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 a, it's an effort in the right direction, definitely.
Cool. Um yeah, Kisi, I see you end up. Feel free to just unmute and and speak.
Alright, um good everyone. Um I'll just, my take here is uh I think the only thing I'm saying yeah, aside from the integration issues, I I don't know, although this is a question for Slid. But I'm aware that um also the education group are working on the ambassador programs uh websites. I don't know if uh that would uh interfere or don't know. This is something that they can integrate into this too, because as as you mentioned previously, there's some tools and I'll give you that we are looking to integrate into this. And um is that gonna be like a separate website? Or uh is it just like, gonna be like a subset of this main program of websites? I don't know. Maybe Slid can provide more insights to that, so I don't know.
Yeah, Peter, if you can go first and then I'll go afterwards.
Well, I mean, uh I don't have much to add, except that um this is coming from um well, clearly, it's 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 a bit of a top-down thing. So um the current efforts uh on the website are not quite considered. Um so I'm I'm also curious to the answer, Slid.
Okay, so um if it's open source, then we can of course uh integrate or work directly towards it. And maybe provide them uh with what we build and uh including with what uh the developers of the site have built. And maybe we can have a a standpoint directly in between both the websites. Uh because uh the uh the one that we created was mainly created for hosting the results and the certification program over there. But um now that this is here, we can of course uh do something in between and uh work with them in a way. But and if it's open source, it's uh not a problem. We can just provide them in something and directly work towards it.
Um well, just a small note on the open source in this side of things, uh we would get access to edit. So I I think that surfaces, like I'm not sure what the, I I I think it's WordPress, I'm not sure. Um so I'm not sure how specifically is, but here we can give access and then you can do.
Yeah, WordPress. I don't believe it's open source, Slid, but definitely developers will open the code for us, so we can edit and populate. So the the main thing is here to have information and to communicate and to have, you know, uh a a bunch of iterations in all our workgroups and guilds. So probably we need to check on that and schedule a meeting. I don't know who's who's uh who's building this, Peter. Same people from the deep funding uh site?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well.
And they they are, they are, they are on the, your same time uh slot, Slid.
Yeah, they are from our country and I believe I have direct contacts, so that would work, yep.
Yeah, that's definitely good.
Um so yeah, in that sense, uh like I mentioned at the very start, uh tomorrow at twelve UTC, there is a call. Um trying to get a bit more syncing between um what we want and what we can get, pretty much. Um I was kind of told to not put twenty people on the call. At the same time, Jan was grinning when he said it, so I think if we show up with twenty people, it still would be no problem. Uh so yeah, um and I'm not trying to put it forward as the only one time uh there's there's opportunities of um input, because clearly, that's not the way of going about this. Um but yeah, just the, I realize it's um, well, fifteen hours, seventeen hours, short notice. Um but yeah, the the um everybody would be welcome to um to join that. Just let me know and I can add you to the to the calendar invite. And again, um yeah, there there will be more opportunities for that. Also, um if you feel like um you have some strong thoughts and you you want to put them in text, um that's also more than welcome. Um of course, I can uh relay anything. Um but yeah. I think let me quickly read up. Um uh what's the main difference with the Ambassador Program website then? Um well, you mean the 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 one by archive, right? Vanessa? I'm trying to understand, but it's not coming naturally. I see. Okay, well, the the one uh Slid um was talking about, right now at least, is is quite focused on the certification uh program and the results of that, which in my mind uh we could simply put under workgroups or under resources, like if we really want, we can put another button in the menu, although there's some uh uh UX UI uh limitations on how many you can, you should put in the in the menu. I hope that someone answers. Um I see uh we are four minutes over the slot, uh part of because we started relatively late. Um yeah, I do want to have another check on the room. Uh any any further comments uh are more than welcome. Uh we don't have to like super rush to wrap it up, but um yeah, just noting the time. Yeah, just noting the time. Oh no, I actually didn't touch on the SEO side of things, uh, yet, uh, which got mentioned during the, the proposals of R and D Guild. Um, so anyway, you can incorporate that, that, I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, how much that focuses purely on socials, or I imagine it would also be website-related.
Yeah, probably Kisi can mention something or somebody from the marketing, but definitely we have a, a clear target, what to push in, uh. I don't know, well, Kisi, uh, if you, you wanna add something i- into that, but definitely we can help into this effort.
It's okay, um, sorry for that, so for now, we still research, the first bit of the, the research, so several is, we can look at how we can generate a tool that helps with certain, certain organization. Well, uh, this initial step is just at the research to the kids and, uh, see the best possible ways of how we can actually integrate this.
Okay, fair. Um, well, if you have relevant, uh, insights on, on the research, which we can incorporate, of course, uh, you know where to find us. Uh, I see also a question in chat if we can integrate, um, with the skill database, um, and uh, Vanessa also mentioning privacy issues, though. Uh, it would open it up to a bigger audience, I'm not quite sure on the current setup, um. Like I don't think it would make it more public, i- it shouldn't make it more public than it is right now, um, but at the same time, I kind of believe it's fully open. So in that sense, it would, yeah, maybe put some more eyes on it, um. But in general, that's more a, a thing of the skill database itself than uh, it being part of the website, I guess. And Amiyo now mentioning, uh, that will be only the forms. Yeah, okay, as in submitting your information to the database, that could be done on the website, and then there shouldn't be any privacy issues. Um, well, that being said, it's, it's, of course, um, it, it's always good to, to keep an eye on the privacy side of things, and, yeah. Alright. Seeing no more hands and no more mutes, I think we can get wrapping up for today. Uh, again, uh, do let me know if you want to, uh, join in that call tomorrow at twelve UTC. It's not a hard requirement, but you are welcome. And yeah, I think that's it for now. So thanks all for being here and sharing your time and updates and insights and questions. And it's a quick reminder on tomorrow's, uh, schedule, so starting off at twelve UTC, there's a call about the website. Uh, then after that, um, there's Archive, uh, workgroup. And after that, there's education. And after that, um, there's Death by AI. And in half an hour after that, there's R and D Guild. And I do believe if I scroll to my Thursday, yes, there's also at, um, eleven, uh, ten, um, UTC, there's the Latam call. I see Kisi mentioning maybe Archive is not tomorrow. Vanessa, could you clarify? I think it's the, the monthly call is tomorrow.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, yeah.
Okay. Well, Kisi won't be joining, I think. Um, cool. Alright, well, that's it, um, thanks again, and hope to see you on one of the many calls tomorrow.